Here.
Member Polchek.
Here.
Member Leto.
Here.
Member Nelson.
Here.
President Bennett Kill.
Here.
Alright.
I was gonna say you don't have Joaquin in motion.
I don't.
We need to move a little bit. Yeah, we have a six week hold.
Now it's time for the public to address the board for community comments. The District 57 Board of Education welcomes community participation. In an effort to both listen to our stakeholders and keep the meeting moving, I want to remind everyone of our public participation procedures and guidelines, which is available in Board Policy two colon two thirty. Individuals wishing to address the board can do so during the community comments portion of the agenda. Individuals should provide their name and then let their comments to three minutes. Please remember that this is not a dialogue between you and the board. The board is in listening mode during this time. Individuals wishing to contact the Board of Education are welcome to do so via the D fifty seven website under the Board of Education tab. Individuals should be able to put your status ability toward others by Board Policy eight colon thirty, visitors two, and comment on school property. Do we have any comments from the community? Seeing none, we can move on to the personnel report. Can I get the motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
Member Dorner?
Yes.
Member Fay?
Yes.
Member Polchek?
Yes.
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. We'll move on to superintendent staff reports. The first item is tax anticipation warrants.
Alright, well, we are unfortunately here to do something that we are in a situation that we really have limited options because of the delay on the Cook County taxes, which has been foreshadowed probably as a topic. We're grateful for Jason to be here as well from PMA. He has been working closely with our Jason. And tonight, we're gonna talk more specifically about what we believe the district needs to do to be able to bridge through the gap of the delayed payments from the county. And then I can give a little context once they do the presentation about just some of the advocacy efforts that we are making to try to leverage as much attention and influence over this as a catastrophic issue that's impacting school districts and other taxing bodies across the county. So that we can talk about that secondly.
Sure.
Excellent. And as Jason grabs his seat, I'm just gonna mention, so typically we receive our taxes in the fall around August, maybe September. So obviously, it's been many months later and we are looking at funding our cash flow. And so I asked Jason to come tonight and he's gonna sit here so it can be in the camera view. And he can share a little bit more just about the tax anticipation warrants.
Yeah, so what the tax anticipation warrants are is in a situation where a district is in need of cash due to an unforeseen event like this, where the county hasn't sent out its second installment. They are obligations that do not count as debt towards the district. They are borrowed in evidence of a need, so there has to be a demonstratable cash flow need for the amount of of TAWs that are being borrowed. The TAW stands for Tax Anticipation Warrant. The TAWs have to be issued in evidence of the amount of cash flow shortage by fund. So the way that the formula works is it is a by fund calculation. So the district currently is contemplating two TAWs tonight. One is on the Ed Fund. The Ed Fund being the largest fund makes the most sense to do a tax, a taxable cash flow borrowing for the Ed Fund. The other is for O and M. The aggregate total is, I think, seven point two million roughly, which is roughly the shortfall of cash that's needed to get the district through its December one bond payments. For purposes of of how the the TAWs will operate, tomorrow, we are actually anticipating accepting bids for the TAWs. The TAWs, as I mentioned, are taxable, so banks will provide a taxable short term interest rate for the TAWs. The timeline for maturity of the TAWs, we have tentatively set for March first, but the TAWs also come with optional redemption. That's something that we're building in so that when the district does receive the second installment from Cook County, you can turn around and pay those off without any redemption notice too. There's no thirty day notice that the bank is is in need of in order to to pay off the TAW. So hopefully, the the financing is very short. We're able to bridge kind of that that gap by making the TAWs callable. And in terms of kind of timing, there isn't necessarily a firm timeline, but we're hoping that the county will be able to send the the taxes out soon.
That's always the hope.
So it's a total of seven point five million that we're looking at. And turning around, we have a big bond payment due November twenty eighth, just around six million plus the payrolls. And we do have some investments that will be coming maturing at the beginning of January. So we know that we're, this is getting us through December, we know we're good with January. And then if it's much later than that, I think there's a lot more other issues.
I was gonna ask you that question.
And we did.
What happens in January?
Sure.
So I said, January recovered, February would be a conversation.
And we did look into the cost of breaking those investments and if the breakage cost would exceed that of the TAW. And we deemed that the TAW is probably the most cost effective option for the district.
And what is the cost to the district again?
Well, the cost of the district will be the interest rate that is that is ultimately bid. We've been seeing interest rates in the range of like four point seven eight to five percent. But the timeline for how long that's outstanding is part of that cost as well. So the closing date, so the date that the proceeds would be wired to the district for the TAWs is tentatively estimated at, or we've tentatively set at November twentieth. That is when the interest will start to accrue. So beyond that point, let's say it's, at worst, it would be March first. That would mean that the county didn't send out tax bills until February.
Assuming.
It was like the first month, so it's.
Well, yeah. And hypothetically, or let's assume it's a month, then it would be the thirty day window. So if if the district were to receive tax bills, say, let's say, December sixteenth, then the the TAWs would be outstanding for a period of twenty five days. And so that would be the window at which costs, that would be the amount of cost, that that time window of what's outstanding in terms of the interest. And then there's fees for bond counseling, municipal advisors.
Sure.
And Jason, I think you and your kind of estimation using kind of high level anticipation with that, I think we had approximated about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, right?
For three months.
For four, for three months, so it would be the.
For three years.
So it's a month.
Hopefully, yes.
It may occur.
Okay, yes.
Now, of course, that doesn't include a calculation of what's lost in terms of the interest that we could be, you know, may, you know, earning with that deposited money and invested money. I know that's a harder number to quantify because it also relies on different factors, but that's another element that's under reported in terms of the harm that's done.
Certainly.
I'm happy to talk about, but I figured there could be some more questions to Jason or Jason. But if not, I'm also, whenever the board wants, I can also talk a little bit about some of the advocacy that we're doing simultaneous to some of this preparation, so.
I'd like to hear about the advocacy.
Yes.
Any other questions, no?
Okay, so simultaneous to the preparation for the reality that we're in, there's been a coalition of sorts of superintendents that are similarly situated in both, either already having to issue TAWs and take action, or break other investments, or anticipation of the need to do these things depending on the timeline from the county. I think first and foremost, there's been a complete absence of communication from the county in proactively addressing these topics, communicating them with other taxing bodies in their districts. It's just been very fascinating to see how much has had to be compiled kind of retroactively and trying to use our channels. As a shout out to our local representatives, Maggie Trevor was the first representative, Cook County Commissioner, to meet with a group of us. And she was very transparent and communicated what really was her analysis of this situation, explaining that this, you know, tech company Tyler has had a contract with the county for over ten years and that this has been a migration that has been scheduled for that time period and that there's been a couple failed attempts at this migration. And then this is the moment where they've actually gone so far as to complete the migration, but in doing so, it was basically like crossing to the point of no return, that it, as they've encountered issues, it was no longer an option to return to the original system. And so they're stuck now in this place of needing to commit to the migration. And according to Commissioner Trevor, she is outraged at the the contract that the county holds with this company Tyler because it, according to Commissioner Trevor, there was very little in terms of consequence that they can hold the company to in terms of the financial restitution from their failure to deliver. I believe if I'm recalling, it's something to the ends of like two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when you think about, you know, the billions of dollars of the county and what's what's at stake. Because again, this is not just happening to our school district or even our local districts. It's happening to all taxing bodies potentially. So she is, has been very interesting in trying to kind of navigate and support the way that she has directed our advocacy. Since that meeting last week, we've had a meeting with several of the state and local legislators. So Mary Beth Canty, Mark Walker, Nicole Grassi, representatives from Tracy Katz-Moll's office, and Ed Rudd has also met at a similar call to discuss and make sure our state representatives know and are versed in the impact of the county's situation and trying to be partners with us and advocating the fight pressure to trying to hold taxing bodies like ours harmless and the impact from this mismanagement. And potentially pursue legal action should there be, you know, in a way to recoup, you know, the lost earnings and money from this. And then we also did a call with Kevin Morrison, who is also Cook County Commissioner in the fifteenth district. And that call was again, just trying to make sure that we're advocating, we're explaining the situation we're in, pressuring, trying to get updates. And we're hearing some murmurings that they're going to be, I believe, I don't want to misspeak, but we're hearing that the fifteenth of this month, that there, today was sort of a change in some of the rumors we're hearing. But I think everyone's hesitant to believe any leads we're getting because we, especially I'm sure Jason's office, who's been following up very closely, and even in our conversations with politicians, I think there's been a lot of mistrust in believing some of the deadlines that have been put out by the county. You know, there's been updates, there's been daily updates from the county, but there's also remains a long to do list and what they're reporting. And so I think it's difficult to assess how realistic some of the timelines are that are coming out. So I think everyone's a little cautious in wanting to speculate if that's a believable timeline. So we're not stopping. We are looking to continue to leverage as much communication about this topic. And also, you know, because this affects us all uniquely, because there's different financial, you know, situations, I think first and foremost, we see this as a advocacy situation for school districts because as we know, having just gone through the referendum process and speaking to rooms of taxpayers, people want to know that when they pay their taxes, they can trust the institutions that they're they're paying to. And we don't want school districts or other other libraries or any other of those affected to claim any sort of consequence in public mistrust and thinking that this is due to our negligence or anything of that sort. So we are looking to make sure that we are clear in our communication and advocacy about helping the public understand the impact of the situation and understand the root causes of it because it is a bit abstract until you really understand some of the working pieces, so.
So how would you?
So we're gonna be working on a collective letter from superintendents signed by those of us who are in this situation and our districts are. There's some talk about some boards doing a, you know, proclamation and having kind of a formal board statement that maybe is symbolic, but it's a statement to say that, you know, we are making a revolution to make clear sort of this was the context in which we were forced to borrow for this short term bridge. And I think we are also looking for advocacy across board members that are willing to reach out to their elected officials and just kind of unify a communication campaign around this topic. Because even once it gets fixed and addressed, the harm's already done and that by tonight's action, there will be a financial cost to even even if it is a month. You know, I think that is still better than it being five months, but arguably, it still has a financial cost. So one other point I just wanted to make was that in our advocacy with legislators, we're really trying to stress the point that sometimes there's criticism from school districts for holding too much money in reserves. And that's a topic of ire, you know, that it sort of suggests that there's a bloated, you know, reserves and that there's not money needed. But our point is in these communications is to say, these are, in the last four years, three times, three years, that the county has been late. And if we rely on property taxes for our revenues, that rainy day fund evaporates very quickly when you have, you know, a daily budget of a hundred and forty thousand dollars that we need to do to keep the operation of the district running. So I think there's an underestimation of the cost of the operations for school districts and otherwise. So we're trying to make sure we're articulating this in a way that our elected officials are able to really assess this need in a serious manner, you know, and and take accountability to the situations that we're in.
Yeah, I I was at two board, PTO meetings, so I brought it up there and they were aghast. So and I was aghast.
Yes.
Um, also, now this Tyler has a contract with the county, but they don't have a contract with us.
So we're in the process of just evaluating that contract and seeing if there could be some ability for third parties to have legal action. I think this is kind of a, I think people are, problem number one, trying to assess, you know, getting those taxes out. And I think problem two is how much desire is there to unite around this as a as something to pursue?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And this is ten years and getting this, it's just insane.
And to Commissioner Morrison and Trevor's point and credit, they weren't even on Cook County at that time. So when this contract was, you know, signed and adopted by the county, they weren't even commissioners. So I think this is a very interesting situation that seems to be really predating and I, and maybe that is the majority of the other commissioners as well.
How long does that contract last?
Um, I don't know. And then I don't know, but I can find out. I don't believe so, according to Commissioner Trevor, but that is that is that topic of the contract and what's possible through it is, I think, something that's of interest of a lot of. So I think that will be the continued investigative work that will be pursued.
You think it would be easy to prove breach of contract?
And and getting out of it though, that we had to find someone else to to repair, to figure out what the heck is going on with with what Trevor left and then take it and do it. And if ten years was the going rate, you know, before to get that transferred over, and I guess Kegy wasn't on board either. I mean, Keg, yeah, he as an assessor.
Um, yeah, he wouldn't have been an assessor at that time, so.
I just want to clarify, Mary, something that you were saying about November fifteenth. And I know it was just speculative, but was was the whisper sort of that perhaps with all of this pressure, the county might get their act together and actually release the payment on time?
They did not source the fifteenth as a result of our pressure, although I would like to believe it was.
Well, sure.
But I, that is, that is, is that inaccurate kind of rumor that you're?
So in conversation with other county school districts, they've also heard the fifteenth, but I don't have anything.
But that's just to.
Substantial.
Bill is out.
Right.
Then it's a whole question.
Something that's like.
So even if they did that on the fifteenth, we'd still have to do this.
Yes, that would not alleviate our.
And that's what I was gonna ask, right? If we did get the payment somewhat more timely, do we have some other means of covering the gap that doesn't cost extra, right? I mean, granted, in the scheme of seven and a half million dollars, a hundred thousand is not a big deal, but it's still a an expense that we do not bear responsibility for as a district. So, I mean, given, you know, everything that we've done in terms of the referendum and sort of the integrity and trust that we've built throughout that process, it's really disappointing to be in this place of like, we have to spend extra money for something that's not our fault. I think relatedly, I appreciate that you're sort of going to the source and talking to, you know, certainly county officials and and state officials. Are we doing anything in terms of like media?
Not at this point, but I think we are, we are, we we believe as our collective superintendent group that I think that channel is the next step to make sure there's a level of, really, again, I think what's to be recouped here is a proactive reputational damage and the misunderstanding of the public. So I think we're trying to run that informational objective because again, what's the harm has been caused, but just now to minimize the impact on the mistrust of the public and sourcing their their anger.
So I assume at our, I know this is an open meeting, but I don't even watch this, this is a people.
Yes.
I don't even watch it. But in our next meeting, when more people will be watching, I assume we're gonna do a deep dive on this topic.
We can absolutely come with more, and if it is of interest to the board, we're happy to bring the resolution to.
I I think it's critically important to message this with the community very effectively.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
What what happened, why, what is the impact to us? Why is this not our, why is this not our?
Yes.
But I think that's really important.
So a draft of a resolution is currently being vetted by attorneys. So just, I think, once it's at a place, I think that makes great sense with our timeline and we can definitely bring that to the November eighteen meeting. One other thing I wanted to mention is that the county is offering a bridge loan to municipalities or other taxing bodies who, but the catch is that there are terms to qualify for that loan and Jason probably could speak, and we do not unfortunately.
Yeah, the the biggest term is that you have to be rated lower than the county.
Good luck with that.
Ah, jumpfire. So there are not many districts that qualify.
That doesn't make sense. Why, why is that? That seems like a completely arbitrary.
It's not school districts.
And why does, does the county even have money?
It's a zero, it's a zero interest loan.
Exactly.
So.
There were about, I think there's four qualified, and I think, I think, I don't know if we had, I don't know if we had any of them actually, but.
There's, it's a hardship. That's the one. Restrictions most.
What's difficult about this is is we rely so much on property taxes.
Yeah.
And therefore, it's districts that could qualify that, that actually don't rely on property taxes as much, that probably don't need it as much, so it's a, it's a kind of.
It's both to reputation risk. Most of the borrowers with TAWs are the highest rated credits in the county because they're so reliant on local revenues.
Well, after these bridge loans, but everybody will call us.
Yeah, that's very unfortunate to be penalized by, you know, a choice that somebody else made and then not be able to remedy it because we have a good reputation.
Yeah, right, right.
Mary, I was wondering if you would be able to put together talking points for us in our advocacy efforts?
I would love to. I will, I will compile some talking points and then I will compile kind of the contact lists of people that we've been in communication with and trying to, yeah, I think the more kind of widespread. And I do think leveraging our channels through our our public, our families, those are the types of conversations that we're having on a daily basis and trying to be not only consistent with our internal talking points, but also across districts so that we're sticking to a message of clarity. Because this is a very, you know, it's just a tough topic, you know, to make sure that you're getting all the details.
So here's a crazy idea. Is it possible to get any of these folks to come to our meeting and actually, especially like the county commissioners?
Well, to to Commissioner Trevor, to Commissioner Trevor's credit, she would, she asked when this need was and she was gonna be, try to be here. So I think we can continue to engage with them. They have been receptive to meeting with us and to, you know, informing from where they sit, you know, what they think is useful. They did think that there is gonna be a Cook County Board meeting on the Thursday of triple I. And so some board members who might be in the city might want to stumble, not stumble, but walk.
That could be an interesting meeting if we stumble over there.
Skip, skip or walk or strut into that meeting and get public comments. So I think those are the things too that I can put, because there's a very specific process to they, to sign up for public speaking. So that those are all channels. But I do think this is gonna strike a nerve that there will be, even once the tax bills go out, I think there will be an analysis and a deep look into what what is the state and how could it possibly be?
Why do we think that though? It hasn't happened in the other counties.
I don't know.
What what makes you think? I love your faith in the the self reflection abilities.
Don't you think, don't the Jasons think?
I think it's a little bit later.
There's a love along.
I do think if it, if it goes in, and we don't know, but if it goes into next calendar year, that impacts you all. So right now, it's not impacting, right? You're getting more interest in the money that you're saving to pay for your taxes, but as soon as it goes in the next calendar year, then you can't claim it and so that becomes an issue for all the taxpayers. So I I think, I'm I'm assuming that a county's doing everything they can to get out this calendar year.
Which will affect your escrow and possibly mortgage payments.
Well, my, yeah. My mortgage company, normally they'll send me letters in October, in September, October, saying what my mortgage payment will be and it's based on insurance and it's based on property tax. So this time, I got a letter saying that they were not going to reassess the the mortgage rate, that what they assessed now without the property tax coming in would be in in place for the next, for the coming year. And then I got another bill, I another letter saying that it was going to go up forty three dollars. The mortgage payment was going to go up. But when the triennial assessment comes and when the other comes, I won't, it won't be reassessed until the next September.
I have a question and a comment. My comment is having we work with Tyler at our work, so I don't have the greatest of faith in just my personal experience with Tyler software. My second comment is that looking at the county's daily report, when I opened that up, I didn't feel, I I think November fifteenth is a whole bunch of smoke. Because like when I opened, because when we had it shared, I think again, I looked at them on Thursday and last week, I was like, holy.
There's a lot.
They're, I mean, they're not like real close. I mean, there was real far in my opinion, from my very amateur opinion. So whatever, that's just my commentary. My question is, I guess, the biggest thing I wanted to to make sure of is, is I guess from Jason and Jason is, I like the the optimism of like, these will be coming out. I guess I just want some assurance that like, that worst case scenario, it is January first. Like, are we, is this, are we gonna need to do any process? Is this going to, again, sort of carry us through whatever problems may arise from like a really late coming out? Again, I love the, I love the November fifteenth, I love December first, I love all those things. But again, I'm I'm more of the opinion of like, what if it's like the worst case scenario is this?
This borrowing will get us to the end of January.
Okay.
Between this borrowing and then the money that's maturing on January fifth.
Yeah, so we might be sitting here on January tenth, maybe the same.
Not unless we're thinking it's going into February, that would be, but.
But that's what we would be doing then.
Yeah. Well, and the TAWs have to be paid from collections on the levy year that you're delayed. So these are technically twenty twenty four TAWs, levy year twenty twenty four TAWs. And they're due when those collections come in. So the latest that the maturity on the TAWs can be is March first because then you're moving into levy year twenty five with twenty twenty five tax bills, so.
So we're gonna need two bills at once, aren't we?
And you have a question about, is it because, are we in a position to have to take out the missed loans because of the bond payment that's coming up?
Uh, that was a big part of it. That it's a big bond payment that we owe on November twenty eighth. So it it would be really tight. And maybe we would then be talking about, you know, breaking the CDs that are appearing in January or which obviously comes with a penalty as well. But then that also would be, what is January looking like? So, but yeah, that is, that is one piece of.
Part of the way that Cook County levies the taxes or extends the taxes too is the, because the first extension comes in the spring, they use the prior years. And it's fifty five percent of the prior year's extension for your first payment. And then the second payment's a true up of the first payment. So because of the timing of the referendum and the larger referendum bond payment that was due in levy year twenty twenty four, technically, your second installment on the bond side in particular is significantly larger than even fifty five percent because it's it's fifty five percentage of the prior levy, which is, for instance, close to, I think, a billion dollars, maybe seven hundred and fifty, somewhere back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
close to, I think, over a billion dollars, maybe seven hundred and fifty, somewhere in that range. Um, and then because this bond payment steps up your payment, you're now due kind of like seventy-five to eighty percent of that bond payment in your second installment. So that's part of the shortage, at least this year, the timing just wasn't great.
Yeah, it was a little bad time.
So do you have any questions?
I guess what I'm just thinking about Ray's question is sort of like worst case scenario. I mean, what you've presented is truly a stopgap, right? Almost solely for these upcoming payments through December, because then you said January, we get this other funding, and so is there a way, or should we maybe be thinking about, you know, what if it's April, you know? And, and anticipating that, I, I guess I'm assuming, and maybe this isn't true, that, um, to do it all kind of at once, the cost would be less as opposed to doing it twice.
Well, you, you'd have to show a need for that money though, which we can't do right now, right?
Oh, I see. Right.
We can show it for December, we can't, I'm guessing.
Okay. No, that's a good point.
No, I shouldn't speak for you, but we probably can't show that need for five months down the road, I guess.
That's fair.
No, it's true.
That, no.
No, i- i- it's true, you, you have to be able to demonstrate a need, and then when we're, if we're getting into April, that means we're demonstrating a need against the twenty twenty-five levy. So that would mean doing a separate set of TAWs on the twenty twenty-five extension, so that would mean your first installment is delayed.
It's a more secondary. Sure.
I think it's a certain, yeah, there's low personal.
Might happen, by the way. We won't know until.
Right.
The county did pass, uh, a resolution to allow for the first installment to go out in April. So they, they did allow for a delay on the first install, on the course of the year.
What would you show in that document?
I guess, I, I, it's twofold, right? It's solving the problem in terms of making sure we have enough money to do all the things that we're supposed to do. And then there's the accountability piece, like, how, how do we make sure somebody is made accountable for the shortfall, right? I mean, it's been, what, three years that we've had these payments late and late and late and late? And with no hope of ever getting back on track, I just, I, I'm sure, you know, we have James looking into it and other districts that are.
I think that's the, that's the piece that I think our collective kind of coalition group, and I think the amount of collaboration across the districts and the superintendent groups is actually a, a good time to try to leverage our collective, you know, influence and capacity to hold accountable, you know, these partnerships. So I think that might be where my optimism is coming from, because I think singularly one district is, you know, it's just not as effective to say, you know, here's the impact, when you look, when even sitting in a room with local superintendents in our area, I mean, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars potentially, you know, just in the impact of these districts. And I think just holding, um, our fellow, um, you know, nonprofits, our government colleagues, you know, our elected officials to understand the impact that even as school districts, when you think of us as businesses, as employers, as, you know, the impact of this, this work, you've gotta really leverage, you know, and treat them with the respect that you would as a for-profit business. I mean, it's not generating revenue, but it's certainly, when we stand to our public and ask for improvements through that funding, that's, those are real dollars that people expect to be used and not wasted.
Right.
And it's that, that waste that is so contentious in our, the public's view of institutions, government institution. This is highlighting a level of waste that no one feels comfortable with.
But, but I guess my, my concern, so I think all the advocacy thinks you're doing it great, and, and maybe, just maybe, that will result in laws changing that prevent the county from being able to, I don't know, right? But even if that happens, it doesn't make us whole, right? I think that, I was thinking the same with Kim was, right? I mean, to me that, that smacks of the need for some other type of legal action that doesn't involve politicians, but involves.
I think we're, I think that is kind of the second phase, that there's some preliminary analysis by some of the attorneys to just analyze the contract through the lens of could there potentially be an angle of legal action? So that, that second kind of level is, it's too early, I think, to speculate the likelihood and the feasibility of it, but I think there's definitely some awareness that that would be another angle to take it. Yes, because that would be the make-whole effort, because this is a for-profit, you know, business.
Right.
Right.
Then we'd have to look at statute of, I'm sorry, I sort of.
We are not a for-profit business, but the technology company is a for-profit business, so.
Then we have to look at statute of limitations, depending on how far, far back we go.
Yes.
Is it two years, is it five years, is it three years?
Well, we haven't technically suffered damages other than right now, so I don't think we could sue anyone.
Right. Except lost interest.
Except lost interest, which we have.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, we have to borrow, but we have lost interest.
That's a good point, which is real. Good point, I like it, yes.
Yes.
And if we're collective, it would add up.
Absolutely. Class action.
Oh, then we don't get as much, the attorneys get a lot.
But it costs us less, right?
Sure.
And we'd be getting something as opposed to sitting back and doing nothing and just saying, oh, wow.
Only meaning a lawyer.
We all look in the wrong.
Not your area?
No, I mean, but I'm, I'm probably having a lot of the same thoughts with James's, right? Like, how would we establish standing and, and all of that, so.
How's your era since the, James's colleague who really kind of does ears, is the attorney that is the process of doing some of the preliminary.
I just have one other question in terms of like talking points, et cetera. I had mentioned Corinne kind of, um, my own concerns, I think, about approaching advocacy from the place of a regular board member, right? Like, no single one of us besides Corinne is allowed to speak for the board. So to the degree you're gonna send out additional information, if maybe some of it can include just some guidance about like, how do we even approach the topic? Given, I guess my thought was like, the only reason that I know about this is because I'm a board member. How do I talk about this outside of that context? And I think, like Jason, to your point, some of it about like, well, as an individual taxpayer, if this keeps going, that could impact me personally.
And I think, um, I'll, I'll definitely send our, um, board policy language, because I know that when we talk about that spokesperson piece, it's usually through media, you know, and statements, but I think the advocacy is not as many.
Yeah.
I had, um, gotten in contact with her on Better, um, through my ASB, just to get some clarity on that, since we were kept having these conversations. And, um, the clarity that she had sent had, from their government relations, um, division was that the policy for the board president's role really says the president is the official, board's official spokesperson to the media, whereas advocacy is the duty of, um, all, as outlined in the oath and conduct of all board members. It says, we're board members where they shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students serving new schools.
Well, I didn't take that quite so literally when I poured it, but I understand, yeah.
Yeah, so that's really where the role of advocate is springs from, is from the, from the oath. I can shut send you the whole.
No, 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 I understand, okay, that makes sense.
And we as board members adhere to oaths.
Sorry.
Thinking of the meeting last night.
Sorry. Um, does anybody else have, else have any questions or comments?
Okay. And, and if we could have, my PTO meeting is next Monday.
I'll make sure you have the day.
Thank you.
Make sure you have tomorrow.
I mean, and, and I'm Mount Prescott neighbors, and even me, the people, um, people have been saying, did anybody get their tax letter? Or their tax installment? Did it not come to me? I mean, what's going on?
Right, there really has not been.
It's just you.
You're not being.
That would be fun.
Well, it's a tax though, and people are like, that's okay, that's okay, you can keep it.
Yeah, right.
I think the concern is that people aren't going the next step to think, because I haven't paid my taxes, means all these taxing bodies are not.
Yeah. They don't, they don't put that.
They're not going that next step, yeah, they're not.
No.
So that, that's the problem.
Because the library is still open, I can still see my fitness class at the park district, everything's fine for me, my kid still goes to school, right?
Right. Yeah.
But you don't understand.
When I left the library, how many, four years ago, they had nine months of reserve. Um, and that was because of the bad situation in two thousand three, two thousand four, where the county was really delayed, and the library had to go to the village and beg. And the community, um, were like vicious animals, totally feral. And so the board decided to, um, to do something about it. And, and even though, uh, people in the community said, well, you don't need that much money just sitting around, why are we paying more in taxes? But see, this is why, let me explain, this is why.
And as a reminder, our, when we do financial projections, we talk about fund balance, that's fund balance as of June thirtieth. So we have lows and highs throughout the year, but that's a fund balance that we talk about as of June thirtieth, but this is obviously a low point as we haven't had taxes since last spring.
All right, let's move on to the details here. So as a result of the delay in distribution of amounts related to second installment Cook County property tax bills for tax year twenty twenty-four for amounts payable on calendar year twenty twenty-five, the next items for discussion would be the proposed issuance of not, of not to exceed six million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand tax anticipation warrants to be issued by the district in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for tax year twenty twenty-four for educational purposes, and the Board of Education would consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of such warrants. The resolution sets forth the parameters for the issuance of warrants and their sale by designated officials of the district and provides a brief summary of such parameters. Secretary, please read the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed six million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand taxable twenty twenty-four educational purposes tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of tax, taxes levied for the year twenty twenty-four by the Board of Education of School District Number Fifty-Seven, Cook County, Illinois for educational purposes and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the purchaser thereof.
Do they have any additional questions or discussion?
Uh, just what, I thought the number was seven point five.
There's two.
Uh, that's in the, uh, sorry, there's, there's two thing, okay, I got you. All right.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed six, six, six million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand educational purposes tax anticipation warrants and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the purchaser thereof?
I'll move. Second.
Member Fay?
Yes.
Member Kowalczek?
Yes.
Member Letto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Dorner?
Yes.
President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
All right, so move on to the second. As a result of the delay in the distribution of amounts related to second installment Cook County property tax bills for tax year twenty twenty-four for amounts payable on calendar year twenty twenty-five, the next item for discussion would be the proposed issuance of not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars tax anticipation warrants to be issued by the district in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for tax year twenty twenty-four for operations and maintenance purposes. And the Board of Education would consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance and the sale of such warrants. Resolution sets forth the parameters for the issuance of the warrants and their sale by designated officials of the district and provides a brief summary of such parameters. Secretary, please read the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-five thousand taxable twenty twenty-four operations and maintenance purposes tax anticipation warrants in anticipation of the collection of taxes levied for the year twenty twenty-four by the Board of Education of School District Number Fifty-Seven, Cook County, Illinois for operations and maintenance purposes and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the purchaser thereof.
Do they have questions or discussion to be had? Can I get a motion to approve the authorizing the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in operations and maintenance tax anticipation warrants and authorizing the sale of said warrants to the purchaser thereof?
So moved.
Member Kowalczek?
Yes.
Member Letto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Dorner?
Yes.
Member Fay?
Yes.
President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Okay, um, we do potentially have a need for, um, closed session, if something is available for, like, a short closed session after this.
Oh, sure.
I think, are you, were you hoping to get to?
No, my, Ava has an orchestra concert.
Oh, okay, um, I think, I have to stay with, I guess, the collective, it would be the collective negotiating matters update, and then it would be the performance, dismissal, compensation, discipline, or appointment of specific employees. So it would be two updates on those topics. If, they both can wait until the eighteenth, if.
Or, I mean, just, uh, procedural question, since this isn't in the agenda, we're still.
She did.
Thank you.
We can always do.
We can always just add.
As long as we have to that, we'll see.
Yeah, I'll stay as long as.
So. We need to move on to session.
Yeah, we have to go back to. We have to go back.
So, um, we are going into closed session for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve in the independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on complaint.
We technically have to vote first.
Right, okay, and collective negotiating matters. And as employees, or the representative of the organization, salary negotiation, salary schedules for one of the more classified ones. Can I get a motion to move into a closed session?
So moved.
Okay.